Good morning, good morning, good morning. Thank you, Janie. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Okay, this is, it's May 29th, 2024. This is a deliberative session of the Sherburne Zoning Board of Appeals on the Farm Road Homes Project. It is a an open session in which people are invited to watch, but it is not an open meeting in the sense that we're inviting a lot of commentary. It's mostly for the board to discuss. Zach, just FYI, your mic's picking up a lot of background noise. Is that from Zach, maybe? Whatever. Okay, so our three choices here are to accept as filed, reject as filed, or condition. So I don't know if you guys have any initial thoughts on that. I thought I might take some of the issues. Unless you do have any initial thoughts, I thought we'd take some of the issues that were big ones in the past and talk about whether they are turned down level showstoppers or not. And assuming nothing, there is a showstopper that we are then able to march ahead. Does that sound like a way to proceed, or does any of you have a better idea?
Sounds like a good proposal.
That's a great idea. Please, please do.
All right, let's talk about, trying to find one of my charts. Well, let's talk about the title restriction. If there were to be a showstopper here, that would be it. Um, that would be intellectually the most obvious one. Jonathan, what are your thoughts on the title restriction? And how it should be handled?
Well, I agree with you that this is the most compelling issue that could potentially be a showstopper. And Mr. Fennell's letter in January mentions that the deed restriction was contained in the deed into Phoenix. And that it would not expire until 2051. That being the case. And I think that's a compelling argument. Phoenix accepted a deed with the restriction. That was clearly part of the consideration in the deal. And is it a stopped from denying the validity of the restriction? That's just, you know, some preliminary thoughts. This might, this might be an issue for another meeting after we more fully get into it.
Yeah, fair, fair enough. I mean, I'm not here to argue for the applicant. If the applicant were able to argue on this point, they'd say, well, whether or not that restriction was subject to the 30-year sunset. And whether it survived by virtue of it being in favor of the Conservation Commission and the party's intent, those are, those are issues that are not clear, not open, not, not, they're not open and shut. They're not judgment of the pleadings level, as you litigators would say. But it's definitely an issue. I, my initial thought, and I agree with you, let's put it aside and sort of chew on some other items, is we could solve that one by conditioning. By saying, you don't get a building permit till you go get a DJ. I, I don't know why the applicant did not start a declaratory judgment on this years ago. You know how, better than I do, Jonathan, how long those take, but that's, isn't that the right legal fix here? Get, get a competent judge to say whether it's enforced or not. So I'm Yeah, so, okay, enough said on the title restriction. What about the other popular issue, and there are many of them? Public water supply. Again, that was one that was investigated in some detail. We took a lot of evidence on it. We decided not to make a definitive ruling. The applicant's view is that it can't be done. I'm not as, I don't think it's as binary a choice as, as the applicant says. And then there are also sort of tweeners where we could have a private system, but with a whole lot of handcuffs that made it look, act, and feel a lot like a public system. Zach, Todd, where, where did you guys come out on that one?
I'll just talk about my own experience putting in two wells in Sherburne. I think that and just, just for the sake of those who might be listening, I built the house at 6 Maple Street and I had to put in, we had to put in a new well at 10, at 8 Washington. In order for me to put my driveway in, and I had to put my own well in. We had to decommission 8 Washington's old well. And just, you know, I, I think the, and I knew what the old wells produced and what the new ones produce, and we're talking about, you know, just a few hundred feet in variate, you know, in distances, and in one instance, like 50 feet in, in distance delta. The variation in production and quality is obviously immense. You can't predict, you know, you can't predict, the best engineers can't predict where the water's going to be. I think with development of the size that the applicant is proposing, I, I have significant concerns about sort of bifurcating up, you know, separating the sources to supply specific units or buildings. I think a public water supply aggregation is, is the solution here. I think aggregating the supply and being able to take pressure off of certain source wells at given times is, is important. I also feel that regardless of the fact that, you know, there's affordable units or not, the, the, the density militates 100% shared responsibility for the supply across that community, and it should not be unit by unit or building by building. That's just sort of, you know, I think the density necessitates community here with respect to resources, and I think that's how we should proceed with respect to either a public water supply or a private supply that has as much restriction on it with respect to testing and aggregation and some things of that nature.
Density requires community, or I'm writing that one down. Todd?
Uh, yeah, so I, I would say that where I'm coming out on this, at least my initial take on it in these deliberations is that the public water supply makes an awful lot of sense for the, the reasons that Zachary just mentions. I do believe that in a community as dense as this, in order to ensure appropriate access to resources and appropriate equality of responsibility for any remediations that may be needed or additional steps that may be needed as water quality or water availability changes, I think it makes sense to aggregate the resources and have all citizens in the community have equal rights and equal responsibility. I also like the rigor of the formal testing in quality insurance that is in place as a result of a public water supply. I know in, maybe not relevant here, but in previous deliberations, I've said that my personal experience professionally, as well as personally, is that it's often difficult to replicate the rigor and the transparency of testing regimens that have already been put in place by certainly governing bodies. And certainly a public water supply has adequate rigor and transparency in place. I would not be in favor of, I'm at this point not inclined to be in favor of replicating such rigor for the purposes of a private water supply. So it's kind of where I'm coming out on, on the water at this point. Still open to discussion. But those are my, those are my thoughts and positions at this point.
Yeah, and, and Todd, you remind me of a good point. These are sort of initial thoughts as opposed to final decisions. And we're all just a bunch of people talking, trying to, trying to figure it out. So I, I hear you on that qualification, and I adopt it for everything I say.
Yeah.
Jonathan, the water?
Well, I have to say I agree with what Zach and Todd just said with respect to the risk of a private water supply and the idea that with, with a community of this density, it seems very risky in terms of public health and safety to have the responsibility split among these different property owners. And and I'm concerned about the the possibility of the water system failing over time and not, not being properly addressed. Or not being properly monitored over time. That's, I think that's a key thing. And we know that with a public water supply, there'll be a rigorous regimen in place. And this is the recommendation of our Board of Health. And I credit their judgment on this.
Okay. Again, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair. Two, two more thoughts, if I may, just to throw them out there. And I think they were kind of touched on, but just to clarify. One is, in the event of a private well scenario, due to the footprint of the development as proposed by the applicant, there would be, I, I think, some, some limited opportunities to drill and source a new well on the property. In the event of a private, private water supply system, so that, that, to me, that's another consideration as to the wellbeing and ongoing access of residents of the development to, to clean and bound to full water. The, the, the other is, and Jonathan touched on this, the, the rigor of the testing is, it is important in two, in two aspects, in many aspects, but two particularly. One, it's to ensure that the quality of the water is there to ensure public safe and healthy. Public health and safety, but also, I believe that you can begin to identify certain markers of degradation over time as well as things start to, to move in perhaps an undesirable direction, in which case ample time or more time is then afforded to, to make appropriate modifications, be it filtration or, or otherwise, to again ensure ample supply to, to clean and healthy water.
Okay. And I, I agree with all of your comments of all three of you on the public water supply. I think if we go with, if we go with public required, that's going to mean a redesign of the project. Because as, as the applicant pointed out, the radiuses for the public water supplies are inconsistent with his current design. As, as Mr. Fennell pointed out, the design was brought to the table by the developer who selected this site and sized it, and if his size 12, a project doesn't fit in a size six water supply design, I don't think that is necessarily the ZBA's fault. So.
I think we go back to the, Mr. Chair, I think we go back to the density. I think we go back to the density issue.
Yeah.
To your point about site, about, about the design, the density necessitates more precaution. If this were, you know, half as many units, I think we, we're not here to talk about hypotheticals, and you know, we, we could go down rabbit holes, but you know, if, if we're, we're half as many units, I think we, we might have a different perspective around, you know, redundancies and things of that nature with respect to things failing.
Absolutely, and, and, and all of the risks would be scaled down, and all of the opportunities to put a replacement well somewhere else would be scaled up. It is, it is quite literally, pun intended, a hydraulic problem. And and, and the other thing that, that gives me a little caution were the, were the numerous comments from the for-profit project in town by the same applicant and, and probably well-designed, but it was a private well system and, and according to the residents, you know, there have been material problems with that. And, you know, even in a, in a well-run for-profit project that was carefully designed, the private well system is not, does not seem to be the bulletproof, robust, reliable system we're looking for. So that, I, I do weigh that.
I think, I think one other, you know, my time in Sherburne has not long lived, but in my time, I've seen a lot of, heard, heard a lot of neighbors and seen a lot of emergency permits to the Board of Health for failing wells, deep wells included. So I think, you know, just to underscore the lack of redundancy opportunities, if any of the well fails, given the current site design, I, I, you know, I will say I was skeptical of sort of the perception of the Sherburne geological uniqueness when I first came to town and was going through my own process, but I think I, my own experience is anecdotally validating that.
Okay. And how do people feel about the septic system at this point? Again, just sort of initial reactions. If you hear the applicant's design team, it's fine, it's perfectly safe, it's an innovative and alternative enhanced treatment technology, gets everything where it should be. If you hear the neighbors and their attorneys and their consultants, it's not, and the nitrogen loading, particularly on the neighbor's wells will be unfair and, and inappropriate. What are your feelings on that?
I just, you know, my, again, initial reaction is that I didn't see any clear demonstration that their new design has been implemented before or any sort of, you know. So there, there isn't a, there, I don't want to be the test case. I don't want to buy the first year of the car. I don't want to be the first person to put those three things in succession and find out that they don't work for some reason. I, I don't think that I would feel comfortable rolling the dice on a first, on a first attempt, even if e- even if it was, you know, a preliminarily approved but not fully approved. That just, to me, seems like folly. You know, having used, I used to be a toxic tort litigator for a very brief period of time, and I can just tell you that human beings don't always get it right.
I'll, I'll be writing that one down, too. No, to, 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 totally the case. Jonathan?
Well, my understanding is that our reviewer Tetra Tech has not objected to the septic system for health and safety reasons.
And so you would be, not to put words in your mouth, you'd be inclined to go along and say there was a design submitted, it's been peer reviewed, it passed muster with the peer review, therefore likely okay.
Yes, in short.
And Zach, sounds like you would not go that way.
Um, I mean, obviously if our experts don't feel that it's an issue, if, if the, if the experts don't feel that it's an issue, I guess we don't have maybe much of a much standing to object, but that's my, my, my sentiment is not to be the first one to try it.
Yeah, I, I, I think the degree of deference we need to offer to the peer reviewer is limited. They are hired guns working for us. Indubitably in good faith and, and, and trying to be objective and trying to say, what's, what's, what's a fair evaluation of the applicant proposal? And in this, and on this side of it, they came down in favor. That does not mean we could not go the other way if we felt that there was material evidence of, of a health and safety risk, so. Jonathan, you're, you're the litigator, but I would say their evidence is important, but for us to weigh as opposed to dispositive, how's that?
No, that's absolutely true.
Okay, there we go. Got one thing right. Todd, what, what are your thoughts on, on the septic system?
Yeah, just, just instinctively, I would say that I, I don't feel great about it at this point, to, to be quite vague and nonspecific or scientific. I do have considerable concern about the concentration and about the volumes that we're discussing. And to Zachary's point, from a health and safety perspective, this is a rather binary issue. We either don't have a problem or we do. And once they put this in, we either won't have a problem or we will. And I, I take that very seriously in terms of safeguarding the safety of the wells of both the residents of the proposed development as well as the neighboring malls. So I, I wouldn't say that I'm, I'm decided on this at this point. I perhaps am not putting a whole lot of weight on the Tetra Tech sign-off, simply because I, I think that the just thinking rationally and pragmatic about this, yeah. I, I don't feel comfortable with it yet at this point.
And, and, and I'm in a similar spot as, as the rest of you. It's been a lot of evidence both ways, strongly held. Everyone thinks that, you know, that inarguably they have science on their side. It's not always clear to me that science is quite as, as, takes sides as clearly as, as maybe the applicant and, and the opponents feel, feel it does. I do, I do weigh Tetra Tech's sign-off. I thought that the Tetra Tech engineer did a good articulation of why he thought it, why he thought the system otherwise worked for nitrogen loading, but, but he wasn't offering us a guarantee. He wasn't saying, I'm, I'm certain it's going to work, I'll bet my license. You know, he was saying, look, I'm, I'm a professional, I think this meets the standard. It, it, did anybody else hear him differently?
No, I, I think that's
No, nor do I think we're going to get a guarantee necessarily, right? And I, and I think that's the nature of this, this type of situation.
Right, no, I, I, I agree.
I think there's also, Mr. Chair, it also, I think there's some also some geologically unique considerations with the location of the septic system. Just in terms of, you know, how water flows and collects and just where, you know, how it is situated in sort of a depression from a, from a bedrock standpoint. I think, you know, I think those, you know, it, it's very logical that water flows downhill. It's, you know, so, um, you know, I know there was a robust discussion about water mounding and the denial of whether water mounding actually is an issue. I think, I think that when we weigh, you know, Tetra Tech's opinion, I think it has to be, you know, obviously, I'm saying the obvious, but in totality of all the circumstances, and I think part of those circumstances are the geological uniqueness of the location of the effluent system.
Yeah.
Right. No, that, that, that's a good, fair point, and, and, and to restate the point that, that you made earlier, Zach. As we see in all these projects, and as, as you've learned on your own house, you know, almost all of the water supply comes from bedrock in our town. And the rock itself doesn't have any absorption capacity or, or holding capacity at all. We're really just dependent on the luck of the draw, of where little cracks are, which crack your your well intercepts on the way down, and which crack leads to that, and which crack leads to that. And it's like this, this spider web that you either get lucky or you do not. And so it's relatively fragile and unpredictable. And I think Nopus in the, in the field of Sherburne materials they gave us did a very good job of illustrating why that was and which way the cracks went due to which volcanic activity went, and, but there's a, there's a huge randomness factor. So that, that's, you know, the, in terms of getting water out of the ground, if you're lined up on the right crack, that may help your water supply. On the other hand, if that crack leads directly to the neighbor's septic system, that's not great.
Or your septic system leads to their well, right? I think that's, I think that's, I think that's the, you know, where bedrock creates some unique, it, it's, it creates, to Todd's point, a bi-, you know, sort of binary result, right? And either the water gets through it or it doesn't, and it tends to want to get through if there's a crack, so if you haven't treated everything by the time the effluent hits, by the time, you know, effluent hits the bedrock, then it's going to find a crack.
Right, but we also have to treat affordable projects or projects that include affordable units the same way we would a market rate project, and, and we, we allow people to build, we, we allowed you to build your house, Zach, and, 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 and and, and so one way to solve the problem would be to say, nobody can build anything anytime, anywhere. And that's obviously not a, not a fair or feasible result, and therefore we can't necessarily go to that default setting for for affordability. We have to come up with a rules and, and, and approach that would work, work well for everybody, so to speak. Okay. What else do you guys see as sort of potential showstopper level issues? There's a lot to talk about in site design. There's a lot to talk about in wetlands. There's a lot to talk about on stormwater. I haven't reviewed things as carefully as I would have liked, but I didn't see anything on any of those that was sort of a, wait a second, this is a, this is, I'm a deal lawyer, so we talk a lot about showstoppers. This is a showstopper, which will
I think those are all conditional, I think those are all, I think, conditionable risks. I, I guess, go, going back just one, one second to the septic and the water flow. What weight can we place on, for instance, like the resident's expert, you know, you know, Mr. Worsley and, and his letter versus in weighing his letter against Tetra Tech, so they equally weighed, you know, from your perspective, they equally weighted, or?
I, I think that, well, Jonathan, you can tell me, but I, I think in our view, we, we get to weigh those. I don't think we, I don't think we are legally required to say, well, the peer review said X and the, and the neighbors' expert said not X, and therefore we have to rule X because Tetra Tech said so. I think we, I think we, we get the call there. Jonathan, would that be your, your sense?
Absolutely, and I have to point out that Mr. Moore and others have taken the time and expense to provide us with a tremendous amount of material that I wouldn't disregard in our deliberations.
Right, right. So, so Zach, I tried to answer your question. I don't think we need to give undue deference or extra weight to Tetra Tech. I think we would be unwise to disregard it. Because they, they do have the advantage of being disinterested, but the weighing is, you know, it's, I keep going back to trial examples, and I'm not a trial lawyer, but the, the trier of fact, whether it's a judge or a jury, decides who to believe and how much to weigh their testimony and
Right. Right.
So. Do that, that 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 answer the question, I hope, Zach?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Um. Okay. Let's go back then a little bit to, um. Unless there are other items that you guys think are are maybe showstoppers, or we're, or we're gonna, do you wanna, do you wanna spend some time on the conditionable? Items I. I I I sort of wanted to parse this into. Showstoppers and not showstoppers, because if if any of the showstoppers stops the show or or or. We we don't have to worry about the rest of them. Um.
I don't think we have any showstoppers. I don't think there's anything that clear, frankly. I think to your point, the clearest. Issue is the site control issue, and I I think the best approach to resolving that is declaratory judgment, um. I think everything else is is. Debatable or conditionable.
Okay, so, um, again, just talking about it, how how many of you would support a condition? That the title restriction be resolved by? A a condition in our permit that the, uh, developer has to go get a, uh, has to go to get a declaratory judgment. Or or other or other binding final, Jonathan, you'll tell me how to write it. Uh, non-applicable ruling by a court of competent jurisdiction. There'll be words, it'll be some of those words will be in there.
With with prejudice, I think is the.
Yeah, there 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 needs to be a, a, that, I I would be in favor of that, um, I, you know, I'm on the record months ago now stating that. I don't believe it's our place to make that judgment. But I do believe it is our place to request or acquire that judgment.
Yeah, that's that's an excellent articulation of it. Um. Jonathan, where are you on that?
Well, I I agree, uh, as as I said earlier, I think that this issue, uh. Merits an another meeting. Uh, devoted to it.
Okay.
Um, and, uh. The outcome of further deliberations might be that that conclusion.
Okay.
But if if we can determine. That the restriction is, uh. In place and has full, uh, power. I think that I I don't see why that wouldn't be within our. Um. Jurisdiction to, uh, resolve and say.
Yeah, no, I I I I agree with you on that, um. Okay. I may not, I may not have articulated, um. My own concerns well enough, um, as a real estate lawyer, I looked at this some at the beginning of the project. Um, and while I didn't do a deep dive on the title, I did spend some time with it, and I've had to spend some time with. Uh, identical or similar issues in my, in in the rest of my life. And, um. It didn't seem to me, and and I think we should have another meeting on it, it didn't seem to me that it was open and shut. Um. You know, if 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 it was like the Wells Avenue case with the restrictions there, it says you can't do this. And the only question is whether or not the CBA can can ignore it. Then then I'm with you, Jonathan. It's easy. The Wells case says not only you can't ignore it, but you can't, but not only you shouldn't ignore it, but you can't ignore it legally. It's it's there. Forty B has no, has no, uh. No staying power against a restriction. Um, all right, so let's let's defer the, uh, the deed restriction issue to another, to another meeting, but I would ask everybody to sort of. Review, um. The, and it was months ago, the 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 prior submissions on that, just so we can all be fresh, uh, for next time. Does that sound fair?
Yes. Fair enough, yes.
All right, let's, uh. Let's go back to public water supply. It sounds like the sense of this group was. Something like, well, we're sorry, a public water supply is gonna be hard, but that's what you have to do here. It's a safety issue. Am I, did I hear you?
I I think that's right, and I think that to your point about we can't condition this project differently than we have in the past due to the fact that it's an affordable project, which I think. Our, we're allowed to learn over time, and I think the feedback from the residents, um. And the other project you mentioned, um, in in downtown, not far from this location at all, um, you know. Educates us on what one of these hybrid systems is like to live with, and I think that it is. Uh, less than an ideal result from my perspective.
Yeah, we did, um, I I meant to mention this, but up because the meeting's being recorded, I'll I'll reiterate it. We did, Fields of Sherburne initially came to us with the the same sort of. Private system, seven private wells with rat tails and easements going all over the place to connect certain buildings. To individual wells and and ultimately we were able to get that back to a public water supply. Which I I think is more robust than, which I think here. Their residents will be happier with going forward. So that, so there, so there is some consistency in insisting on a public water supply. We did it with the last. Large, four forty B of this scale, I think. I think there were private water supplies, um, the record will show. Whether I'm right or not at fifty nine North Main Street, but that was, of course, much smaller. It was like one third this size. So different, very different scaling. Um. So is this sort of preliminary sense of the group that? We're gonna insist on pu- public water supply here, even if that means a re- resupply, redesign? I'm seeing heads nodding. Okay.
I mean, if it redesign is, it's up to, I was gonna say, go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah. No, I I, uh. And I add that, uh, as I said earlier, this is the recommendation of our Board of Health. Uh, so it is a. By reason of that, a health and safety issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I I again, I don't think things are for us to weigh. If. If we were to say it's a health and safety issue, we'd want to have more than just the Board of Health's recommendation, that that is a data point. And evidence, but it's not dispositive evidence. Um, but they're smart people and they're hardworking and they have the community's interests at heart. Um. Okay. What about septic? Do you want to sort of thi- think a little more on septic and reconvene? We're gonna have to think a little more on title restriction or reconvene it. And I I do suggest that we all. We cap, uh, the materials to date on public water supply, just to make sure everybody's comfortable with where we are. Um, I'm not. Obviously, you're not hearing me lobby for any particular outcome, whether or another. I just want us to be prepared and and thoughtful and intentional.
Um, just so, this is truly just a, a. A question I have not, it's not informed yet. I I wanna go back and double check my, you know, all the materials, but.
Sure.
Would a condition, could a condition be with respect to? This, uh, new system that we get some clarity from the regulatory authority. Um, that apparently has not provided that clarity in terms of like whether this full approval or not, I mean. Because there seems to be this back and forth, and it, my my takeaway is that it's not clear to me whether this is a fully approved system, whether or not it's opined by the experts to be appropriate, and so. I just wonder if we can't put the some of the responsibility on our. Our state regulators to own whether this is a fully approved system or not, which I think. You know. Would provide some assurances to me if the state was. Fully endorsing it and not as a temporary or, uh, preliminarily approved system. And I know that Bob's perspective is that. Uh, at least my impression, I could be wrong, but my, his perspective is that, uh, the applicant's perspective is that. You know. The full approval is all but perfunctory. It's all gonna happen in a matter of course when someone who's on leave comes back or something like that, but again, I I think that that's. An assumption and and not a fact. We have to deal with the facts, as Jonathan reminded us, uh, in our last deliberation, so. Uh, I think getting to the facts of whether or not this system is in fact fully approved or not is is. Pretty heavy to me in terms of whether or not we could condition that.
Okay, so, um, and that's a good point. So you, you're essentially saying you'd love to hear from DEP that the, uh. Star thirteen point five system, if I've got that phrasing right. Is in fact. Fully approved for unlimited use for unlimited time in the Commonwealth.
Correct.
I don't know if we could do that or not. Interesting question. Um, but it's it's also an interesting idea, so thank you, thank you for the suggestion, um. Other thoughts on the septic? Got a couple of choices. One, we could say, um, we think the, um. The Butters and their lawyers and their engineers have raised a. A material issue, no, Bob, uh, I think you'll have to have to wait, um. Have raised a material issue of, um. Uh, of 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 health and safety, and that's the end of the discussion. Um, another is we could say, uh, we think the. Developer has has provided a a reasonable and safe system. The Tetra Tech, uh, ruling we're going to view as sort of tipping the balance. In in their favor and therefore will condition. You, there won't be additional conditions. Go ahead with it. Go ahead with the design as approved, or. We can add layer additional conditions on top of that, like Zach just suggested, um. Where do you come out amongst those choices? It's it's, it sounds like. Well, first of all. At a preliminary level, just sort of at a straw poll level. How many of us would turn down the system based on? How many of us would turn down the system today? Based on the material submitted by the Butters and their engineers? I will say that I am not ready to do that myself today. I have to review the materials and think about it some more. Um, I'm not, I'm 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 not done with the weighing, um.
That's where I'm at.
That's where I am as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, right, so so. That's a live, open issue that we might talk ourselves into in terms of how we weigh things. Um, but it's 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 not the sense of the board at at this moment. Um, what about additional conditions to try to, uh? If we thought we're gonna go in favor of this system on the septic side, Zach suggested one. Are there any others that we should?
I mean, I I I I would certainly feel more comfortable if it had full approval, but at the same time, I I, in just thinking out loud here, I wonder how practicable it is to condition that. Um, seeing as how provisional approval. Apparently carries a significant amount of weight in and of itself already. Right, are we, are we, are we, are we splitting hairs here? I I I I'm just. Perhaps there's a misunderstanding of provisional versus full approval in the eyes of DEP.
Yep. Right, and and, uh, one of my thoughts on on Zach's suggestion was maybe to, um. Check with town council, have them check with DEP and say, you know. What can we find out here? Because we don't want to condition our decision on getting a rolling from DEP. And DEP just says, well, sorry, but we don't do that.
Ri- ri- right, that, and tha- and that's what I mean, right? Because we we certainly can't. Force by way of condition a regulatory body to do something, um, out of their ordinary due course.
Yep, I guess my sentiments on the septic are just, you know, if it's the first time this is being tried, I want to proceed with an abundance of caution, um, and so. I think, you know, gathering, making sure that we're checking off our risk boxes with, uh, weighted evidence, I think, is is important.
For sure.
Right, um, I also want to push, uh, town council for. Uh, some sense of our deadlines here. I think in the Greenwood Street project, there was some confusion about when the. When we had to decide and when a decision needed to be completed, when that decision needed to be filed, and I want to get some more hard-edged answers for us. So I know there was a lot of scrambling in the last one. I I know, uh, none of us, none of us were were thrilled about that, but I appreciate everybody's. Running around to 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 pull it together. Um. So do we want to set another, um, discussion meeting and, uh. Send each other home with some homework to think hard about these, and also I particularly want to ask. Each of us to go through all of our notes, and by the way, I've not done this myself. Um, and look for other key conditions that, uh, we want to flag and make sure the group has decided as a group. Um, the Tetra Tech letter, the last one is probably a pretty good guide on that. Um, but we got a lot of materials in from, uh, Conscom. And from Board of Health that I think we ought to be looking at carefully, decide, oh, yeah, we want to put that in the decision, or yeah, we don't want to put that in the decision, or or not. As the case may be. Um. Does that sound like a reasonable process and and homework?
Yes.
Yes.
Because anyone who disagreed was gonna be compelled to come up with a better idea. Um, okay, um. Today is, uh, Wednesday, the twenty ninth, um. Our time on this will run out quickly, um. Any chance we could do another morning session? Um. Either. Later this week. Um. Which would probably only be tomorrow or Friday, and I don't think I'll have time to look at my. Or at the front end of next week. What do people's schedules look like?
I'm only, um, available Monday morning next week.
Right, because you're going away.
That's right. I'll be back Friday, but in the afternoon, I don't even think we want to have a meeting on Friday afternoon. For the sake of the applicant, I don't think it would be good for me anyway.
Uh, no, I was more thinking Friday morning, if people could do it. Uh, Jonathan, I know you were in favor of morning meeting, but he's shaking his head, no, can't, can't.
Well, I can't do it on the seventh. But I could, I could do it on the thirty first. In two days.
I can do it on the thirty first.
You don't have four, you don't have forty eight hours now.
Okay.
Okay.
Or.
Unless you can do it, if you want to do it at nine, I'll post it like immediately.
Zach, could you do?
For Friday?
That this coming Friday, this coming Friday, uh, at, uh, at nine AM.
That's correct, I can do that.
I can do that.
All right, JD, please post it.
I'm gonna do it right now.
Thank you, great, great idea.
Very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Um. Yeah, I I know that's a short fuse, but I think our time will run out of us more quickly than we think, so.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
Sorry, do you, do we know what our deadline is for the decision, Rick? Even back at the envelope?
I I I I have to look it up. I thought it was something like. Uh, fourteen days after we closed the hearing or something like that, but then there was a, there were two deadlines. One was to make the decision, and the other was to file. And last time town council told us that the make the decision and file were the same day. And yet the regulations have two different dates, so that's why I want to push back on that.
Okay, um, I just wanna, uh, uh, my time is very limited than the next two weeks, so I, you know, I wonder if we shouldn't try to book something else now as well, or just while we're all.
Okay.
Here to make sure we. Grab another time, um.
That's actually really smart. Let's do that. All right, so what will you?
So I could do the morning of the tenth, which is a Monday morning. I could do.
So you've got nothing between the thirty first and the tenth?
I'm in Chicago Tuesday morning through, I, um, I could do an early morning Tuesday. I- in the car on the way to the airport.
Okay.
This coming week, um. I've got a ten thirty flight, so.
Right. I'm just, I I just, I want to get your vote. Um.
And I could do Friday. My son has ECDC graduation Friday, the seventh, but I could do the afternoon or late morning, so.
You don't have to do ECDC graduation. That's an important part of life.
That is most important. I I will be back for that, but we could do the afternoon on Friday, the seventh, if Jonathan's available, or I could do Monday morning, the tenth.
I'm not available on the, on the seventh, but I I can be available on the tenth.
Okay, so we could do the morning of the tenth. Uh. June tenth, um. Eight AM?
Perfect, yeah, I'm not leaving, I'm leaving in the evening, so I have the day.
All right, and you said Tuesday, the, uh, is Tuesday, I don't have my.
Tuesday the fourth, I could do. Uh, before, as long as we're, we start at eight, I'd probably be in the car the whole time in the airport, but I could do it.
All right, so is the proposal that we set meetings right now for Friday, the thirty first? At nine. Tuesday, the fourth at eight, and Monday, the tenth at eight? Is that the proposal? I'll make that motion. See the heads nodding, all right.
Works for me.
Second.
All right, so I hereby move that we, uh, ten, and and we can always cancel meetings we don't need.
Right, at least we have them.
Right, this was so so that we, uh. Set and have Jeannie post meetings for. Friday, the thirty first, nine AM, Tuesday, June fourth, eight AM, Monday, June ten, eight AM. Can also schedule more as we have time and 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 wish, but at least we'll have those on the books.
Rick, I'm sorry, would you repeat again what time we start on the tenth?
Eight AM?
Yep, okay, good.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, um. All right, anything further you want to discuss today? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn this particular meeting. I see, I see shaking heads, all right. I move that we adjourn.
I second that motion.
Move and seconded that we adjourn. Oh, I guess, and I guess we technically never, I I'm gonna make a a joint motion. I move that we schedule meetings for May thirty first at nine, June fourth at eight, June tenth at eight. Um. Subject to any further meeting uh dates and times, as the board may vote later. Um and that after that vote, if it passes, that we adjourn. That's my combined motion.
Seconded.
All right, move and second, any further, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. We'll do it by rule call. No backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
Bobby, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, gentlemen, thank you all. Let's go do our homework. I'll try to come back with some good answers on timing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody for listening in.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thanks.
Bye.